We six is right now?
Five fifty-nine.
They have to say, okay, now it's time. Six, five fifty-nine.
Five fifty-nine.
Ten seconds.
You got it, she. Now you got ten.
Oh. I'm good. Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. All board members are accounted for at this time. So would everyone please join us, place the flag as we pledge our allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the white light for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Before we approve the agenda, I would like to make one change on action item, new business number two, tennis cooperative agreement. We'll make that a discussion item and probably a brief discussion item as we wait for the extracurricular committee to convene to discuss our long-term commitment between the two schools. We haven't done that for a while, so it's probably just time. So, discussion item. With that change, unless somebody has any other updates, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion. All in favor of approval of the agenda with that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Schedule presenters, we have two this evening. The EDA representative Laura Qualley is here, as well as Cannon Falls Area Forest, it says, Amanda will make a presentation as well. So let's start with Laura Qualley. Wherever you are, there you are.
I wear my most subtle shirts, though. Are you working on the show, Katie?
I think so. So if you want to just, do you want me to just, I'll just let me know?
Okay.
I'll let you know when you can advance it. So like Bob said, I'm Laura Qualley and I work with the Economic Development Authority in Cannon Falls. I am technically contracted with the city of Cannon Falls three days a week to do their economic development. I work for a company called SEDA, which is Community Economic Development Associates. And I also work for the community of Mantleville as well. So what we're going to talk about this evening is just some housing updates in Cannon Falls, some things that are on the horizon. But you know, as many of you know that, you know, Cannon Falls hasn't necessarily grown as much as we'd hoped that it would have in the last 10 years. Our 2010 census, the population of Cannon Falls was 4,083 people. And the 2020 census, we're at 4,220 people. So it's really not as much accelerated growth as we'd hoped. And a lot of it is because there hasn't been a lot of housing developments and housing opportunities in Cannon Falls. But I'm here to tell you, we actually have some opportunities that are coming in the near future in Cannon Falls. So I know that some of you are probably aware of the redevelopment of the Cannon Ball, the former Cannon Ball truck stop lot. That, we're, at the most recent council meeting, that, the preliminary plan for that, for the rezoning of that from a business district to a residential district was, it's in the process of doing that. The first ordinance was read. But hopefully in October, that second ordinance will be read and approved and we'll be able to move forward with the development of that property. Or we're one step closer to getting the property developed. So Kate, if you wouldn't mind advancing. So this is a 3D rendering of what the Cannon Ball lot will, will look like in the future. It's a 79-unit building. Most of the units are actually studio and one-bedroom. And with that, we're really hoping that that will help with, you know, some of the, you know, some of the younger professionals or, you know, I know that we have teachers that, you know, like first-year teachers that come to Cannon Falls, you know, they don't have a place that they can afford to stay, they can't buy a house. So they're driving, they're commuting from Byrdsville or Rochester or whatnot. So this would be an opportunity for them. It also gives people an opportunity that maybe want to downsize from their home. You know, they're an active senior, they don't want to, they don't have the need to go into assisted care or nursing home or anything like that. This would give them an opportunity to downsize, they can still have their pet, they still have amenities and can still invite their family over. They've got a community room within the facility, there's underground parking, they have a car wash, they have a place they can store their, store their, their items and everything. And then there are two bedrooms and three bedrooms. But really based on these developments that we've seen in Red Wing, they're, and they're going up at some other communities, similar size of Cannon Falls. There's one being in, there is one in development right now down in Zambroda. And a lot of the people are coming out of the Twin Cities, or they're coming out of Rochester because they maybe don't want to navigate those big metro cities anymore. They want the amenities, which Cannon Falls has a ton of them. And this way they have that independent living, they have a nice place to live and they can, you know, they could still be snowboards if they want. Like I said, it could be for teachers, it could be for first-year, you know, professional right out of college, maybe they don't want to live in their parents' basement forever, but they want some independence, so this would give them that opportunity. Because right now in Cannon Falls, we don't have a market rate apartment complex. Most of the complexes that are, actually all the apartments that are in Cannon Falls are all subsidized housing. And this is not, the rents are not subsidized in this building at all. So if you want to flip to the next slide, Katie. I try, it's kind of grainy, I know, but this shows, this is like the parking stalls are 56 underground, actually their main level, they're not like underground, but they're covered parking. And then there's a fitness room, there's a lounge, there's a community room, the office, there's the lobby. And then the unit mix on here shows that there'll be 24 studio apartments, 33 one-bedroom, 19 two-bedroom, and then three three-bedrooms. So it really won't be a lot of children. I know that that was one of the other concerns with this project, that there were going to be kids with no park or green space to play. But really based on the unit mix, it's really not going to necessarily be swarming with children and families. Kind of a funny anecdote is that what the developers are finding in other communities that they built these in, the three-bedrooms get snatched up by some of the retired active seniors that don't want to downsize their furniture, or they want a quilting room, they want a playroom, they want an extra bedroom, but they don't want to get rid of their hutch, they want their china, you know, they want all that kind of stuff. So those three, in two bedrooms actually get snatched up by some of, some single people before they get snatched up by families, though. And then the next slide, Katie. This would show like a second, the second, third, and, the second and third floor unit mix. You can see that on the ends is where the two-bedroom, two-bath are, you've got the three-bedroom, and then like I said, the two-bedrooms are on the ends. But then there are kind of every other, studio one-bedroom, studio two. But anyway, so the second and third floor will be the exact same. So the other popular, or the other area that will be developed, this land, so I did a city map just so you can kind of see. So if you know where County 17 Boulevard is, that heads out of town, so like if you took a right at Senex or BP, back in there, so Gemini would be this bigger area here. This red area was just recently annexed into the city. So there was 12 acres total. This four acres here is owned by the Hazes. And they broke up and are selling this parcel to a developer called Greensmith Builders, and they build energy-efficient homes. So these, in this case, they're not, there's going to be 25 homes that will be put on this particular lot. And he's actually considering purchasing this 35-acre stretch to develop as well. So this is kind of a phase one, if you will. But the energy-efficient homes will be, you know, there really won't be a carpet footprint with it. They will be solar panels, they will be electric homes. So, you know, as far as affordable, they're not necessarily affordable homes, but they're an upgrade for people that maybe are living in a home that are either outgrowing it, maybe they're people that are more environmentally conscious and this is what they would prefer. I don't know, okay, yeah, if you go to the next slide, I wasn't sure if you had the updated one. So this is just a couple images of what those homes look like. And the developer came and spoke to council last week, and I think that he said that the homes will probably be in that 350 to 450 range, depending on building cost. But it's that upfront cost, and then it's an efficient home going forward. So again, it's not going to be, you know, a newlywed couple with, you know, a child on the way, maybe purchasing this home, but it might be something that people would upgrade, maybe after their empty nesters, or maybe they are downsizing from the cities, they want to come to a smaller community. So this is another option for housing that's coming to Cannon Falls. And the next one. So the other upcoming opportunity is, so again, I kind of tried to do a city over map, but this is County, County 25, that would have, like here's the water tower for those of you. So this area is called Sandstone Ridge, it's up on Cedar Hills, if any of you are familiar with that area. And this is land that the, that was supposed to be developed in 2003, that never was developed. They got this, the infrastructure in, they got this, the roads, the sidewalks, curb gutter, and then everything started shifting. And pretty soon the manholes are two feet off the ground, you know, and everything's sinking and buckling. So they were unable to, the developer kind of walked away from this because it was near, it was impossible to build a house that was going to be structurally sound on it. So what happened was after it went into tax forfeiture, it now went back to SEMCRA, which is Southeastern Minnesota Something Housing Something Authority. I can't remember what all the things are. Anyway, so it went to SEMCRA, they did a study on it, and it was going to cost over a million dollars to correct the soils in order for it to be developed. So if we have another, I didn't add it to our slideshow because I don't want to hold the guy to it, but we do have a landowner that owns the property around the water tower that has been going back and forth about plating that and building housing as well. So if that particular project comes to fruition, we may have a borrow pit to help to correct these soils. So council did, the city did take this land back from SEMCRA a couple months ago, maybe about a month ago. So that we now can maybe partner with other developers, we can maybe develop with private parties to help maybe do, start developing these in sections and not do it all as one. But, you know, it may be slab-on-grade, it may not be a basement. But the thing is that these soils have to be corrected before any development can happen. So there is area, this, this particular area was kind of dedicated as a park space for this development. But we will have to see what happens with that in the future. But, but that again is another possibility. I did, the Sandstone Ridge, when this, so based on our comprehensive plan, the city kind of uses as their guide, back in 2003, 47 units were supposed to have been built on this property, and that never happened. So anyway, so between the, with the apartment complex, with the green housing from Greensmith Builder that will be coming in, and then also the possibilities that Sandstone Ridge brings, we do have some opportunity for some growth, which again, you have to look at the shift of people downsizing, maybe into the apartment, freeze-up housing that families can purchase. You know, if you've got, maybe you live next to a neighbor that she's 90 years old, you know, she doesn't want to, you know, doesn't want to go into a home, maybe doesn't need to, but if she were to move into the apartment complex, that house now frees up for a starter home for a family. So that's kind of the big picture of how that all works. It's not, everyone's going to move here, everyone's going to move into the green space. It's about people shifting, either upgrading or downsizing is how you create some of those open, the open inventory that can be created in Cannon Falls. So the other thing is that if you do have interest in more about the housing situation in Good Hugh County, on Wednesday we are starting a Good Hugh County Housing Summit webinar series. So it'll be every Wednesday, starting this week. This week's topics are going to be the Good Hugh County Housing Study that was done last year. And kind of gives you some, a perspective as to like, what's really just the demand and the need in the county, and then it's broken down by the different subsections. Then we'll also be talking about affordable housing. Then in future weeks, there'll be alternative construction options, like that green housing we were talking about, and also some modular homes, zoning alternatives. Everyone's seen those cute little tiny homes that we all wish that we had in our backyard. But talking about how can cities and communities maybe, you know, kind of welcome those into their communities to, again, provide housing, but maybe not all that commitment that people have with a home and a lot. Housing rehabilitation and land trusts, tax incentives for development, property listings for development, and then homelessness in Good Hugh County. So those are the topics. If any of you are interested in it, you can just Google Good Hugh County Housing Summit, and you can register. All the webinars are free. They should last about an hour, but we've got a couple different speakers each week on different topics. So if something sticks out, go ahead and register for it. And my contact information is on here. I also have some business cards I can leave on the table if anyone has any questions regarding anything. I don't know, was part of my presentation answering questions, or do I just go home now?
This was informational for the, for the board, I think, to see what's happening with our local housing. But piggybacking on that, there's nothing absolutely focused on low-income housing or first-time buyers.
It's, what it is, Bob, is that it's about, well, some of these developments that are coming in will help to free up some of that inventory by people shifting. You know, whether it is a lifestyle change, it is, you know, a chapter in their life where they're looking to either upgrade or downgrade, you know, or, I shouldn't say downgrade, I don't mean that, I mean downsize. You know, as far as their responsibility and whatnot. So that's, so there is, there is opportunity in that fluctuation in how, what these opportunities, what these developments will provide. Any questions from the board, or?
I had a question about the Smith Green one, would that be hooked up to city water and sewer?
Yes. So the utilities will be connected to that as well. So yes, they, they're living off the grid. I mean, they will have actual like water and sewer. But it's just as far as the, a lot of them will be solar and green, green living for energy.
Anything else from the board?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. That was painful, huh? Okay, next scheduled presenter, Amanda?
Do you know which one is yours?
Well, I probably didn't share it with anyone. Can I just plug in?
Oh, sure. I don't know how that works, but I'll let you just do what you need to do.
Don't break it, they're broke.
Okay. Yes, yes, I got it. All right, well, hello everyone. I'm Amanda Thompson, and I teach biology, AP Biology, and sixth grade STEM class here at Cannon Falls High School, Middle School. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about our newly designated Cannon Falls Area School Forest. New, well, I guess, I think it officially happened last fall, November-ish maybe, or December, or somewhere in there. But we are now in the school forest program that is part of the Minnesota DNR. And as such, we do have some responsibilities with that, but it's provided some great opportunities and a space that I'm just excited to take students to on a regular basis. So, and there's, it's like, you gotta...
Oh, okay. Do you want me to do all of them?
Four clicks, yeah, it'd be fine. The space that we have for the school forest has always been there. It's been an outdoor space, but somewhat underutilized. There was some use by me and a few other teachers on a regular basis, but I honestly don't know that a lot of people went to it because there was a lot of trails that had some issues, invasive species have taken over a large part of the area. We lost a bunch of trees in the 2018 big storm in September, you know, the tornado. And honestly, there were like pretty much no amenities to support like a classroom space to learn in. So this is the area, I'm sure you've seen the little patch of woods between the high school and elementary as you've driven by, but maybe never realized there was anything to it. The blue lines represent the trail system that's actually been in place for quite some time. But as I said, it kind of has fallen into disrepair, or had at one point. And so what has happened over the last two years is we've taken a patch of woods and turned it into a school forest. The catalyst for this was, well, Tim and Julie Miguelis came to the district in 2019 wanting to make a donation to the district in honor of their son Ben. And initially, the idea was to plant some trees of various types in that area or somewhere on school property. But I think pretty quick, we kind of got to the school forest idea, like let's start, let's make this bigger. And so we had a committee that was formed, we got the DNR became involved, they did a forestry, I don't know what you call it, some analysis to kind of tell us what our space looked like. And I think there's one more, one more. And we had a lot of ideas floating around, but decided to start focusing in on some of the key things to really get this space working. So the first big accomplishment was really access. Which was to open up the trails again. There were a lot of downed trees covering the space, a lot of them had a brush that was really kind of encroaching on the space. And so our school maintenance staff did a bunch of work, especially in the summer of like 2020, to open up those trails. And we repurposed the playground woodchips to make it a nice walking surface. So recycling, or reuse, I guess, reuse is what it would be. So they helped out a bunch with that. We also started the buckthorn removal process, and I'm not going to say we, because I was involved, because I wasn't. But Tim and Julie have done a lot of work to help get rid of some of the large buckthorn that has taken over treating those stumps, trying to get that stuff out of there. It's a process, there's still more to go. But we've made some inroads and we're starting to return our forest back to what it used to be.
Sorry, I don't know why.
Maybe just...
There you go.
I don't know. Another thing that we are working on as part of this site is restoring the prairie area around the pond. It was established as a prairie, was it 2009 we had the big remodel and reworking of the land? So it was established but never maintained, so we're starting to get that back into shape and get some of those prairie plants growing around the pond. And this spring, last week of school, some students and I and Mr. Pliscott planted a whole bunch of little oak seedlings. A lot of them don't look like they're going to make it, but there are definitely some that have leaves. So we're hoping to help restore some of those good wildlife trees to support the ecosystem. Another thing that happened was we were included in a field desk donation that is done on an annual basis by a couple of volunteers from Rochester. They make these field desks for schools in the school forest program and donate them so that students can use them when going out into the school forest. So we got 30 of those desks in May and have already used them for a variety of classes. And just so that the two buildings wouldn't have to fight over them, one more click, the Miguelises contributed 30 more. So we now have a set for both the high school, middle school, and elementary buildings to use for students. The most recent addition to our school forest area, it has been the addition of some benches to create some classroom spaces. So this one over by the elementary, and then the one by the high school, that was one thing that's been missing for a long time, was a place to go and sit and do some things and, you know, talk about stuff. So we now have that, that space with the cedar trees that came from the school forest itself. So again, repurposing. So here's our current working map of our school forest area. You can see the circles are the two classroom spaces, the trails are still where they've been, and a few ecological areas that, well, at least at one point were defined, and they still somewhat are as this as well. But this is our space. So based on what I know about what people have been doing out in the school forest, these are just a list of some of the classes and activities that have been occurring out there, both this fall and last spring. I'm sure there are a lot more than this, but I don't hear about all of them. But we are really getting students outside and getting them into that space to use it, and it's, it's wonderful. I have found so many cool things in the school forest over the years. So it's really great to share with students. We have a lot of plans, the school forest committee. These are some of the things that we are looking to do into the future. Obviously buckthorn is going to be an issue, we're going to have to keep going after that. Many people have wished that there is more signage out in the school forest, so you know where you are and what you're looking at. So we're going to work on that. I've been speaking with an Eagle Scout who is looking to do their Eagle Scout project by adding seating to our trails, so nice place to kind of stop and sit. We have a main entry trail that needs some work. I have a vision of this beautiful observation deck overlooking the ravine and the pond. It's still a vision, but hopefully we'll get there someday. I think there's a couple more. We've talked about maybe putting some additional trees in to help restore the ecosystem. And this was just kind of my thing, but maybe there will be some opportunities for some staff training or work to connect what the school forest has to offer with the things that we're doing in our classrooms. So we'll see where it all goes. Here's just some examples of cool things that have been found in the school forest and how students have used it. So if you have any questions, I would love to answer them.
Just a wonderful legacy for Ben and a wonderful donation and hard work. I hate to demean anybody, I know that, I know Tim and Julie and the work they've put in, but it's a group effort, it's a committee effort, it sounds like. So congratulations, Julie, would you like to say anything?
We're very thankful for all the support from everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is really...
From the board and the principals and the teachers and community. So we're very thankful for that.
We're so proud to have her.
Yes, thank you. I'm very proud to have her.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anything else for Amanda, as long as we got her up here? Thanks again. Student committee representative, we don't have one this evening. School board committee reports. Does anyone have anything, the committee, that's meant or anything, anything for the cause?
The marketing committee met this week. We talked about the implementation of social school. And so we're, I think, really thankful for that partnership with them. We've seen a lot of more engagement with the Facebook group and Instagram, and I know if folks walked into the building, they saw the signs letting people know about how to follow us on social media. It's been really great to see the faculty and staff respond to that and share pictures and stories. And I think one of the things that I really enjoyed was, I know that there was a bit of a kerfuffle with the communication last Friday with the power and different things like that. But I think to see some of the photos of how our faculty responded to that, it was really great to see, to see that. So if you haven't and are not following us, please do so. And then the, both Bill and I were at the COVID Advisory Committee meeting. And I think the biggest update from that is looking at implementing rapid testing in a couple of weeks. We're working on getting those tests available so parents can choose and opt-in for their student to be tested. So if they're at school and they're symptomatic, it saves us some time and will hopefully help reduce the amount of learning loss. If the student gets a negative test, they can go back to the classroom unless they're pretty, pretty sick, in which case they should, should probably go home. But if they're positive, then they know right away. So we're hoping, again, that that's something that, you know, will be of interest for families and will help reduce the, the learning loss time there. And I think, I just want to say again, thank you to our nursing staff, and they have continued to do a huge... And they have continued to do a huge and big, big lift there. And so I know you guys, your time and energy and resources are strained, but we thank you so much and appreciate everything that you're doing. So it can't be, I don't know how else to, I don't know, thank you doesn't feel enough. So thank you.
No, that's a great job. It's a great job. Anything to add at all, Pam? She's done a good job with that.
No, I think she did a good synopsis and working on getting those tests ordered and getting that going.
Now, if you weren't busy enough, please do test, yes.
Okay, next.
Wait, Bob, I was going to mention.
Excuse me. Sorry.
The Ed Foundation had a meeting and they will be having their poker social this Saturday, October 2nd. And it starts at Mill Street and then you go around and pick up cards and put your hand together and there are lots of great prizes. And sponsors from businesses around the community. So not sure what time it starts, but I think it's.
Is it 4:00? No. Poker thing?
I think it's, yeah, the poker social. I'm sure you can check the website or.
I'm pulling it up for you.
It's in the newspaper.
It starts at 4:00 PM at Mill Street Tavern.
4:00 PM, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, administrative board reports. I think your packet has everyone's report in here, but anything you would like to add? Jen, anything to add?
No, nothing that's not listed in the board report.
Okay. Tim? I've seen Tim.
Just one thing. We found out on Thursday that we were one of 46 schools in the state to receive a gold award for college readiness from GreatSchools.org. So and that is all about how we prepare kids for college and success on the college level. So we're really happy to do that.
Congratulations. Great thing. Community Ed and activities. Reed?
Just a couple of things. We're going to get our community advisory date set and we'll get that emailed out to the committee. My admin assistant had been out for extended times. The last meeting that we had in the auditorium, I had said, first week of school, the fall brochure was going to get blasted out. Then we had the domino effect of after being out. So that's going to, she assured me today that that is going to get sent out through Infinite Campus and email access to those that do not have Infinite Campus here either tomorrow or Wednesday. All right? Other than that, all sports, scheduling, rescheduling this year, next year, we're staying busy. Canon kids, I got numbers for you. Before school, we're currently at 58 kids getting care, 116 after school, and we have 11 on a waiting list at this time.
Very successful. Head of operations, I don't see Dave here. Supes report. Jeff had three or four items. By the way, Jeff is at a superintendent conference up in Duluth, so he couldn't be here this evening. He's just making recommendations to the board as to three different topics on here, including the tennis co-op and others that we'll address later on. Public input. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with building administrators and/or the superintendent. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature and may not exceed three to five minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debate during those three minutes, but will take the information and find answers if that is appropriate. This part of the board protocol is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage or character assassination at a board meeting. So having said that, what we try to do here is to keep the public input to issues that are on our current agenda. Having said that, if there's anybody that wishes to speak to things on our agenda, you're certainly welcome to do so. I know that some of you have a vested interest in other issues that the, that the school has been involved in, especially the COVID type of issues. But unless you have something additional to bring to us at this point in time, I would ask you to keep those questions to an absolute minimum. If there are multiple people that wish to speak to the same topic, I would, I would hope that you would put someone in charge to be that speaker for the group. Having said that, we can open that up. Does anyone wish to speak, knowing what public input looks like, to the board about any particular item? Please stand up and please recognize yourself for us.
I am Diane Johnson. J O H N S W N, one N and Diane. Anyway, and I'm speaking about public input, which is on the agenda, so I guess I'm allowed to speak to it. I was at the last school board meeting and yes, I, I mean, I was just at my 50th high school reunion a couple of weeks ago here at Mill Street. Listening to people at that meeting and especially after the public input, I was highly disappointed in the Cannon Falls that I grew up in and the people that I know and love in this town. We have rules for the school about bullying and intimidation and behaving, and I wish we had those same rules for public input. I wish that we could learn as a community to be able to disagree respectfully. I could not believe the bullying that went on at that meeting. I could not believe during the intermission you had called that when the gentleman behind me was screaming and screaming and I stood up and said, could we try to be polite? He's screaming at me, so what? And then I just said nothing. And then he turned at me and said, take off that mask! And I thought, it's not hurting you if I wear a mask. I did not say, why are you wearing a mask? But we need to get beyond that. If we're going to have meetings, if we're going to have people willing to serve on, on the school board, on the town council, on committees. And I think we need to reflect that behavior in all meetings when we have public input. And the only other thing I'd say about public input, and you folks did a great job, other groups that I've been with, when you have a divisive issue or a passionate issue, say, you have one speaker that says, I take this stand, and then you have the next speaker says, and I'll take stand B, then you have an A person again, then a B person, so it goes back and forth. Anything that we can do? Because I also noticed there's one school board member who's not here tonight. And anybody who feels like they have to resign from any elected position or appointed position in our town because people are bullying them or intimidating them or berating them, I find that appalling and unacceptable. And I would ask all of us, I mean, obviously you know what, I believe in masking, but hey, if, you know, there's another opinion, people have a right to that and that's okay. But somehow we have to learn to model the kind of behavior we want to teach our young people, which is respect, be nice.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Mark?
Mark Lund. My question is, based on this, you've got a policy approval on an agenda item for MSBA policies. And my understanding is there's supposed to be two readings of the policy before it gets approved. I haven't seen anything in the past. I don't know what these policies are. I do know that currently you have a policy on equity gender, which apparently allows men to use girls bathrooms and girls to use men's bathrooms in your policy manual now. As it slipped through. So I'm just questioning your practice and your policies for implementing board policy without having hearings on it or putting it in the agenda so we know what that item's going to be. Reading your manual, it tells me that you should have two readings of policy, then a third session for approval. And as far as I know, this is the first time it's in the agenda in recent times. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just dovetailing up a mark, I'm Matt Belford, local resident here. Getting back to the last meeting in August, you know, I rewatched the video of the council meeting. And the motion was made by Katie at the end, and she was questioning about the legality of the motion in that order. And then turning to you, you said, well, I don't know if it's legal, but you went forward with it. So I guess my, my question is, you know, when that was out of order and you moved forward with it, like, are you, I guess, why, more or less? Why did you move forward with something that wasn't on the agenda and yet you, you went forward anyway?
We won't necessarily, we're not supposed to deal with public input until after public input is over or in the foreseeable future if there's a question to be responded to. But in this case, I will tell you that we, we sent information such as yours to our attorney, MSBA, no, our, our legal attorney at Radwick. They specialize in school education. And they said nothing that occurred at that meeting after reviewing the tape and reviewing the information. Nothing was incorrect. So we stand on what we did and we move on from there. Anyone else? John? John, identify yourself. I don't know who you are.
Okay. Yeah, I, oh, did you say, I'm sorry, Bob, I, John Drives. Yeah. Sorry. So yeah, it's interesting to hear some of the comments here tonight. I would agree with that. It's hard to look through everything when emotion gets involved and stuff. It was brought up tonight, the COVID advisory board. I know last meeting, there were some speakers who were on it. It sounds like some school board members are on it. I don't know if I'm just not good at using the internet, but I can't find any information on when the meetings are, where they are, if the public's even allowed to be in there. I know you guys won't answer this, so maybe I'll send emails to everyone at the end, but I would like to know how to attend that and where they are because it sounds like you guys take a lot of advice from them. With that being said, I just want to list off some stats as well, since it was brought up, the COVID advisory board. These numbers came from the Goodyear County website and they're up to date as far as September 16th, 2021. Total population in this county is 46,340. The total active number of cases of COVID currently are 134. And out of those, 134, four are hospitalized. So again, total population, 46,340. Active cases, 134. Total hospitalizations, four. And you can get that on the Goodyear County website. So out of the total population, there are 134 cases. That's a 0.002% of the population that is COVID. I only bring that up because I know when things get loud, we revert back to what we're being told and the stats are right there for you. Thank you.
Okay. We'll cease the philosophical discussion. Point taken. Email to get the committee dates on there. But we're now entering into some areas that I wanted to steer clear of just because it can digress from there, as, as one speaker's already noted. We understand, we understand the questions, we understand the statements. So unless somebody else has something. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Belinda Toon. My question is similar to Mark's. I noticed just recently on the website, which I found, you know, that there was a listing of health and safety measures for the 2021, 2022 school year that has been referred to. And actually it says it was adopted at the last board meeting, which I also attended. And I don't recall hearing this read. And I wondered, and I can also email and ask, but since the Robert's Rule of Orders and the protocol is that it should be a public reading of the health and safety measures, I missed that and I've attended a number of school board meetings and it's being referred to. And so I, it suddenly appeared on the website this last week. So I'm just kind of wondering where it's been and when it started. And because it is a topic of concern that it gives, seemingly gives unilateral powers to the superintendent, which is letting go of our own school board that we elected. So I guess I can email that too and ask if, if I can just email you or I don't know if I email the secretary to find out when that was instituted, when it was read, and when it was implemented. Okay, thank you.
It does fall in line with the, with the procedural issues that we dealt with, with our attorney, having, having had them look at that. So I'm going to close the public input for now and move on to the consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davison?
There we go. Sorry. I should have given this to you.
Just as we, I wait for that to load, just to kind of shorten the speed of it. We all know we're going through the audit process currently as we do every fiscal year. As our fiscal year goes, July 1st to June 30th. It's been progressing pretty nicely. It's a lot more maybe involved this year than in prior years just because of the amount of federal funds we receive through CARES and ESAR, required the school to go through a single audit, which then also touches all federal programs, including not limited to food service as well. It's a little more involved this year. We're still hoping to be able to present the final audit at the October meeting, the second meeting in October, be the goal. And it had, like I said, it had been progressing pretty nicely. So pretty short and sweet on what the finance report is today. And if I could leave my glasses on, I can probably see better than if I try to look at my iPhone. But the top, if you're just to slide it down a little bit.
Can you maybe slide it down?
Yeah. This is the cash balances as of the printed report between the merchant account and community resource. I see the cash balance. And again, important to note that cash balance is not the same as fund balance for the district. Cash is going to have all of the available funds for the district, general fund, food service, community service, debt service, trust agency, all that's in there. So we start talking about, as we work towards presenting the audit in October, in the fund balance for the school district, two different items. Probably the biggest thing to note in this month as we're coming up is the second half of our property taxes is due late October, early November. Our main funding of revenue for the school district is through Ideas, the state financing mechanism that funds school districts. You'll see the September 30th payment, I believe we're on $750,000, roughly, give or take. As we go down into the October Ideas payments, you'll see them decrease significantly to where even November 15th, there are no payments received from Ideas. And that's as we receive the county taxes from Goodyear County, majority of it from Goodyear counties, that's the majority of our districts in there. And then some from Dakota County. So they balance each other out, essentially what happens. One reduces, the other one will see increase. As we sit through here, the one balance, sorry, the cash balance through the end of the fiscal year, we stay positive and no forecasting of doing any aid anticipation borrowing. The last thing to kind of talk about, I guess, is we're in the process of filling out our ESAR 3 application to help fund us through the rest of the district in any COVID-related type matters as well. So if there are any questions, again, that's kind of short and a suite of it, but if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer.
We seem to be maintaining our undesignated fund balance or it's too early to project that?
Yeah, well, maybe a little early, but it's still, based on how things have come through, we stay fairly close to what we had projected for the undesignedated. Just. Just basically plus or minus, staying relatively even, maybe a little addition to the undesignedated. It's a good point when we talk about fund balance. General fund is made up of the undesignedated fund balance, and that is really what is our operation, what our day-to-day needs can meet. As a district, we're only at about 2%, a little over 2% in the undesignedated fund balance, which for us just makes one payroll. If we were to talk to auditors, they would rather see us have, you know, 12% to 16% as that would provide two months' worth of operations for the district. Not that it's unrealistic, but most districts aren't operating in that kind of ballpark. Our fund balance policy has been adjusted to strive for 4.6. As we reach and get to that goal, we'll reevaluate and try to adjust that policy further forward. It just kind of seemed like when you're sitting at the 2% to 3%, that it's hard to go, hey, we want 16. It seemed like going where it meets, we don't try to go for it. So we set the goal a little bit more realistically, try to reach that, and then always treat that and move that up. The other person in the general fund, they're really of importance for the district, LTFM funds, long-term facility maintenance of the buildings, and trying to make sure we have needs required for capital items, roofs, maintenance, repair, those sorts of things. Severance, those sorts of items are designated, those funds we put away into a designated fund so that they don't get touched, that lower ZMO that we have for our day-to-day operations. But a good point to bring up, the undesignedated, where we're going to be at, as it sits right now, pretty close to where we projected, we're doing our budget for the fiscal year 21.
Other questions for Josh? Thank you. I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Rebecca on the motion. Bill on the second. Other discussion? All in favor of the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. If the agenda board member wants to discuss any single item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for further action. And before we even discuss these things, as a rule, Jeff likes to recognize people that have donated to our school district, and so I've asked our clerk to read off our donators for this month.
All right, $250 in school supplies by Avis Estery, $350 of school supplies from Sweet Harvest Foods, $75 worth of school supplies from St. Ansgar's, $75 school supplies from Harpside Foods, $25 school supplies from St. Pius, $10 school supplies from Anonymous, $2,000 from the VFW for dance, $2,395 from the CF Band Booster Club for a tenor saxophone, $140 from Heather McWaters for classroom supplies and 20 new novels, $200 from Triangle Automotive for the tennis team, $600 from Anonymous for the 21-22 Welcome Back Breakfast for staff, and $1,000 from the USTA team for the tennis team. Thank you for everybody.
Thank you. And as we look through these resolutions, we'll comment on one at the end here, but if anybody has any questions about the items on the consent agenda or would like to pull them off, we can do that. Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Brenda?
I'll second.
On the motion. Bill on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Would be remiss if we didn't recognize one of the people on the personnel items as a school board member who has recently resigned from our group. And there will be information coming out as to the procedure to move forward on replacing that board member. It won't happen for at least a couple of weeks, as we have other things going in our life, but we will recognize the need to replace that board member and go through the procedure to replace that board member. And more will come out as we gather the information, how to correctly do it. So having said that, Brenda?
Well, on behalf of the board, I'd just like to say thank you to Anna for serving on the board and all the time she put in on various committees. I know she took the responsibility very seriously and was very dedicated to being a board member, so just wanted to say thank you to her. We really appreciate her time spent on the board.
When we look at all the committee names on here and who's assigned a committee, people raise their hand and say, this is a committee I'd like to be on. As you can see here, Anna has raised her hand more than her share of time, and sometimes that can be overwhelming as we get involved more heavily in committees and updating. So I, too, would like to share that. She was a valuable board member, and she stuck to her guns all the time on votes. We have to acknowledge that a person stands on their principles, and she certainly did that.
And I would just like to say she brought a very deep, she brought a very good perspective to this group and brought a lot of talents that were able to bring some really good things forward for us all, and I will miss her.
We don't lose board members so often, but it's tough when we do.
As a new board member, Anna was one of the first people to reach out to me, and I will miss her perspective and her presence on this board. I think we, I'm very grateful for her, and she was always, always there for support for me as a new board member navigating this, and so I'm thankful for the opportunity to have served with her and the example that she set.
Yeah, and I guess I just want to say that I was very disappointed to see the email come out when Anna announced her resignation, because there is a lot of effort and time that goes into sitting up here. And as my wife wrote the letter to the editor after the last board meeting, Anna did put through a lot of effort, and she was very, very instrumental in creating discussion. We did always see items on the same side of the page, but it brought discussion, and I thank her for that, so she will be missed on the board.
Thank you. Thanks to all. No old business forthcoming. Under new business, consideration to approve the 21 statutory and recommended policy changes from MSBA. Jeff's recommendation, as you can see on here, is these are yearly updates to policies from MSBA. These have been run by our, run through by our policy committee. No concerns were brought forward. I recommend approval.
Can I speak to the two reading thing?
Yes.
I'm on the policy committee on a different board, and it was my understanding that the two, the multiple readings is for new policies. Is that correct, Lori?
Well, a board may choose to adopt modifications that do not affect the substance of the policy, or because the modification reflects a change over which the board has no control. And in this case, it's a legal change that you don't have much control over.
Right, and so like if it's just a, if it's an MSBA updated change, there, you don't, it's that too?
Then you would do it like we're doing it. That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that I was correct on that, on that, because that's what I was told through my other board as well.
Yes.
That we do the multiple readings on brandy policies or policies that have large changes made to them, more so than just a date or a name changing.
More like these that have come out of legislation.
That have come out of like, yes, or statutes. Okay. I just wanted a clarification for, thank you.
We can have discussion item on it after we motion second.
Okay.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
By Bill?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie?
Mm-hmm.
No. Any other discussion on this?
I didn't, I didn't see any that were out of the ordinary of
No.
Just the statutory, you know, like the legal updates.
Okay, we have a motion, the second on the floor, for the approval of the statutory and recommended policy changes from MSBA for year 2021. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the tennis cooperative from Randolph Schools. This is a discussion item, and I'm not sure, Mr. A.D., how many, currently, how many associations we have in sports with Randolph?
Right now, we're currently in eight cooperatives. Several, most of them are with Randolph. We do have some, one that we didn't have anybody participate in last year in gymnastics with Northfield, and we do have adaptive bowling cooperatives with Goodyear and Zabrod.
I think at present, it was, it was thrown out there to have it on the agenda as a action item, but I don't think we should go in that direction yet, until we look at the association, if you will, we've had with, we might as well do it all at once or have further discussion, and I think it merits.
Because we have time.
What's that?
We have time till tennis comes around again.
So we just need to have all of our stuff signed and sent off to the High School League 30 days before the first day of practice, first day the season starts.
Okay.
Which was the major issue that we had, Randolph reached out August 10th, fall sport started the 16th, High School League said.
Do we have to do it each year? Do we renew each year for?
Nope.
Okay, so.
And once we start a new one, so if we were to enter into a new cooperative, for example, the tennis one, Randolph, we'd have a two-year commitment.
And how does it work for the funding for cooperatives? Do they come to our school, or do they go to Randolph?
So we will go back, so what has happened in the past, when we have kids from generally Randolph participating in our sports, at the end of the year, when I get back transportation numbers, we take all the costs, so coaches, salary, benefits, all supplies, entry fees, all the costs, and the revenue. Some of our sports are non-revenue generating, especially the spring sports, but if there's a gate for those, then we decrease it by that, as well as the activity fees that the students pay to participate, I hope, with the cost per participant. For an item like track, it'd be pretty inexpensive, or something like golf, it could be really expensive depending on where it is, but that's what they'll get going back, reaching for the participant, the actual cost.
Okay.
So it's not a moneymaker or?
Sure, so it's kind, so it just allows the child to participate. Perfect, okay.
So Reed, you said that you have to have the paperwork in 30 days before the first practice?
We would, for example, again, sticking with this example of the tennis cooperative with Randolph, their board would have to approve it, our board would have to approve it, we'd have to send it to the High School League for their approval.
But is that for each sport that would, okay, so it would be just this one that we'd be, have to deal with? Okay.
So once you are in a cooperative, anytime you want to make any changes to that cooperative, whether you lose a partner or you add a partner, you have to dissolve that cooperative to form a new cooperative. So then that would, again, that would happen at each board level, send everything up to the high school.
Okay.
And once you enter that new one, again, it's that two-year commitment.
At what point in time should we be dealing with this? As a, I think it would go to the extracurricular committee for conversation first, and that would be.
Be a question to Katie.
I don't think I'm on that committee.
Yeah, well, surprise, you are.
Maybe I am. Not a committee head, I am. Oh, you're the committee head?
Yeah, you're the alternate, Katie.
I'm the alternate?
It's the last one on the.
Okay.
I think the first thing from my perspective would be to reach out, for me to reach out to Randolph, and again, make sure that this is something that they would look at.
Oh, that one.
They would be interested in us moving forward with for next fall. We would then take care of everything that we need to do committee-wise, board-wise, same thing on their end. Really, by June, I would want it wrapped up to make sure that we've got everything squared away, but we could certainly do that sooner than that as well.
Okay.
Very fair, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to that? Moving on. Consideration to approve the proposed levy certification fiscal year '22. Mr. Davison, I'd sure like some input from you.
Sure.
If we're able to pull up on the agenda, Katie, there's a one-page kind of summary of the levy certificate, and it ran a large document that a lot of moving parts, it goes to go into it each year, but what you'll see is a comparison of last year's levy compared to what would be certified here tonight. Generally, we'll see potential increases or decreases in your tax as it goes here. There we go. I don't know if I can get the page a little bit larger, really, it's that middle section where this circle is.
Oh, this one right here?
Yeah.
How do I make it bigger?
If you can't get it, that's fine.
Just twist the cursor down and hit the plus.
But anyway, I guess the main thing, you'll see the three main funds that we'll see here, we lost the OPEP trust as, 10 years ago, we were able to levy for OPEP through a trust. It was a $1 million trust. We basically withdrew about $100,000 each year on that as it paid the debt on it. That fund is now paid for, the debt on it, we no longer have that trust, there's no levy for that, but we are able to, because of a sunset clause in our current contracts, able to levy for it through tax and not have a special trust for it, which will end up then showing up in the general fund. The main thing, because it's our main operating fund, is the largest amount of dollars ever received would be the general fund. Again, with the glasses we'll see here. There's a slight, just a very small increase from last fiscal year in the general fund for levy. You would see generally an increase in this, if you were to see, you know, constant or a, either increasing enrollment or steady enrollment, we have a slight decrease in enrollment, so there's a little bit less revenue there. So even though money's increased on the formula, we're basically offset with some of the loss of enrollment, so a pretty cost neutral. Now, the main thing we do, when we look at certified, the levy is, it still has some ability to adjust before we final, the final certification in December. So what we recommend always when we certify the levy in September is that we levy the maximum, that way it allows for us to have those adjustments as they go through. If you were to levy a certain dollar amount, then you're stuck with that dollar amount to the plus or the minus. Community service, that fund relatively stays pretty flat, a small increase, 1.72%. In all, with all that increase, sounds like a larger number, it's $2,400. The big decrease, the reason why you'll see a decrease in your school tax statement for the levy is debt service. There's no reduction in the amount that we have to pay for our debt. That is set by basically our mortgage payment for our debt. But when we levy for debt, the statute is to levy 105%. In Goodyear County, people are pretty good at paying their taxes. When we get the excess of debt in our trust or our fund, they do a debt service reduction. So we're able to offset some of that and help the taxpayer all a bit by reducing that levy. So that's what that reduction is in debt service, this is a debt service excess reduction. All in all, total levy would decrease 1.96% based on this. Again, it's at this point in time, September 30th, and the recommendation would be that we certify the max when certified in the levy. Any questions I can, sure, help?
Anybody have any questions? So I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed levy at the maximum certification for '22.
Correct. I'll move to approve.
Moved by Bill?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of max levy certification for fiscal year '22, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is carried. We come to the end of our meeting. Our next regular board meeting is October 11th. We probably have some committee meetings, that'll be rolling out before then, so we should have an entertaining next meeting. Among the items that we've got listed so far, the winter head and assistant coaches and the MCA information. Anybody wish to speak about anything in particular, board members? If not, I would listen to a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Where'd that come from?
That was me.
Rebecca.
I'll second it.
Rebecca on the motion to adjourn, seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished. We are finished. Thank you for attending.